Are they coming? Should we wait for them to be?
If she was going to be here today, they're not coming. I'll take the medals and take the...
I'm trusting Richard.
I am, ma'am.
Good afternoon. We have a quorum present, and I'd like to call the April 5, 2016, meeting of the Board of Education to order. We have a guest with us today, Indira Arani, Arana, who is going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Indira, if you'll come forward.
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Indira, welcome. And I believe you have a special guest that you brought with you this afternoon. Would you like to introduce her?
Mom.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Brought my mom with me.
Okay. Is her mic on? Deb? Is her mic on? It is, Jamie? Oh, okay. Indira? Okay. So, introduce your mom one more time.
Her name is Erica, and she's really... She... Sorry. She... Her name's Erica.
Okay. Hi, Erica. Hi, Mom. Thank you for bringing in Indira. We're trying to get... Does she project at home, or just... You probably don't have any problem hearing her at home. So, tell us about what you like and maybe don't like about school.
I like writing and math. My favorite encore is PE. I like running. I play the piano and the clarinet.
Excellent. Do you plan on continuing with running, maybe doing track, or...
No, I just run occasionally.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like us to know about you? Have brothers and sisters, pets?
I have a sister and a dog, and I like to travel a lot.
Where do you like to travel to?
Well, I've been to India and London, Florida and North Carolina.
Wonderful. And your favorite is?
India.
Wow. Excellent. Did you get to ride an elephant by any chance?
No.
No? Okay. Any of my colleagues have a question for Indira?
I have a question. I like your socks. Can you tell me the story about your socks?
Well, I lose the other pair. So, I like to wear different socks. Yeah.
Very nice. I thought it was just an efficient use of resources. You lose one, you lose the other, and no reason to throw the others out, right?
Yeah.
Good for you. I think they look great.
Thank you.
It's showing a creative personality, right? Okay, very good. Thank you so much, and appreciate you bringing her today. Thank you, Indira.[292.12][292.12](Applause).
Excuse me. Such a good question. We've got to hear it again.
We're going to wait a moment until some of our special guests are seated, and then we'll proceed.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the agenda as prepared and recommended by the Agenda Planning Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. It's a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any questions or comments on the agenda? All those in favor? Seven zero, student concurs. Thank you. Approval of the minutes?
Yes, I move for approval of the minutes of the closed session as amended for the session Tuesday, March 15, 2016.
You paused, so that jumped in.
Took a break.
Is there a second? Closed session minutes?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the closed session minutes? All those in favor? Seven, abstention?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gessford and the student abstain. Thank you. Next set of minutes.
I move for approval of the minutes of the work session held on Tuesday, March 15, 2016, and those of the business meeting held that same day, Tuesday, March 15, 2016.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Any question on the public minutes? All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. We're moving on to public comment. We have one individual who signed up to address the board today, a Nigel Dardar. If you'll come forward, sir? I believe they're all ready to go for you. And I'll explain briefly the protocol. You may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker is limited to three minutes of speaking for himself or herself, or five minutes of representing a group or organization. Are you speaking for yourself today or an organization?
Myself.
So, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Did you want me to proceed?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Of course, as you know, this is my first time. I live in Hancock and very much love Hancock. I'm a transpact Texan, and I've served on the council before. And primarily limited myself, if I've been active in others' campaigns, is mostly trying to help install signs, because I don't think I have the overall background or knowledge that a lot of you guys do and the others to speak. But I have a severe concern. I'm glad Clayton is here also. Because of my attending a couple of events and still trying to stay in the background, I feel like you guys need to look at your website where your videos are archived. As I became somewhat accidentally involved in school board elected politics, I wanted to get some background, and I didn't even know about your 1:00 p.m. meetings versus your 6:00 p.m. meetings. And there was a lady in your office that told me that. So, once I finished that conversation with the person, I asked if there's such a thing as your meetings being archived on video. And it took a minute for her to get me to the right website. And I went to that website, and I certainly can see where your two-hour meetings are archived there, one item after another, one picture after another. And when I would click on that singular picture with the title and a date, smaller videos off to the right side would appear under an overall title called Related Videos. And I guess that's a part of the YouTube situation. Some of those were all over the place from the videos. Could have been presidential politics, whatever else. But in all honesty, the part that disturbs me the most, and we've got so many young people here, I'm not going to use or repeat the language that's repeated. There's some two-minute segments that have been reproduced from your official videos that are in this right-hand side, that if I was a 12-year-old or 11-year-old wanting to understand school board proceedings, they would be exposed to these other videos. And my thoughts are, the individual that has captured two minutes out of your three-hour, two-hour meeting superimposes his very crude and rude words on the top of proceedings with letters being read. I can show you better. I won't proceed. I know I'm three minutes, but I encourage you, Clayton and the rest of the board, to look... Look at it as if, basically, my knowledge of your activities is not much more advanced than a 12-year-old going to that website. There's some very atrocious language on there that this individual that's taken two-minute segments out of your two-hour meetings, and again, I'm not going to repeat the words that are there. But I don't know how you can deal with that, but it gets back related to the fact that your school board are elected individuals. And the term bullying could be applied to how these words are. There's some extremely crude words. I have some of it here, but my time is limited. And again, like I said, I was greatly disappointed. And I think yourself, along with the whole group, needs to see what potentially children and adults are being exposed. If they do want to, in theory, just look at archived videos of your meetings. They're exposed to some pretty sad information that, in my mind, is politically motivated.
Thank you, Mr. Dardar. Okay, that is the only individual we have who signed up. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to come forward and speak to the board at this time? All right. Any board member response to public comment?
Madam President?
Dr. Harding.
I just want to thank Mr. Dardar for coming and speaking. I spend time regularly looking at our videos of our meetings. I'll leave it to you to decide whether that means I have a life or not. But as I prepare for meetings, I often watch previous videos. I haven't seen the things that you're referring to, so I want to thank you for bringing it to our attention and my attention. And I think the more detail that you can provide to our Public Information Officer about the programs, vehicles you're using to get there, I think the better he and we will be able to do of policing the kinds of things that you're concerned about. So, thank you.
Mr. Wright is in the back of the room, and he's our Communication Director. You see his hand. If you'll reach out to him during the meeting or after, that would be great. Any additional board member response to public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much. Today is one of those days that we get to recognize excellence. And board members, I hope you will join me in celebrating some of the accomplishments that many of our young student athletes have recently won. We're going to recognize the Boonsboro High School girls' track team. They are the 1A indoor state track championship or champions. And we're also going to recognize a number of athletes from Boonsboro, North Hagerstown High, Smithsburg, and South Hagerstown High, and as well as Williamsport High School, who have won individual or state championships either in wrestling or track. And so, board members, if you'll join me up front, would... Dr. Harding, would you help me with the...
Boonsboro Awards?
Mr. Ridnauer, would you help me with some of the others? I know you've kind of stepped into Mr. Bailey's place. Mr. Wright is going to read the names, and they'll come across. And we'll also recognize some of the coaches as they come across as well.
Okay. (Inaudible) certificates, but I'll remind you when I get there. Okay, the Boonsboro Girls Indoor Track Team, if you want to come forward. We congratulate you on your state championship this year. Some of you are very familiar faces to all of us. We've seen you numerous times over the last couple of years. Again, congratulations. Emily Anderson?
Hey, Emily. Congratulations. Thank you. Your mother should be...
Megan Blair?
Megan, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Cameron Harper?
Congratulations, Cameron.
Cameron, congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, Abby's not here.
Okay.
Molly Jones?
Good job, Cameron. Hey, Molly, how are you? Just a second. Congratulations.
Emily Kimball?
Emily, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Emma Lang?
Hey, Emma, congratulations, and thank you.
Bethany Lohman?
Hey, Bethany. What was your bet? Outstanding. How'd you go?
McKenna Luzier?
I'm standing. McKenna, congratulations. What was your bet?
Richard. Slow down.
All right.
I don't direct staff, but it's a request.
Hi. How are you? What's your bet? What's your bet?
Congratulations. Two, $300, four right words, and seven members.
Ainsley Plumbador? Malia Simpson?
Malia, congratulations, and thank you so much. Anna's not here. Unfortunately, my son didn't get to...
Michaela Stein?
Hey, Michaela, how are you? Congratulations. What was your bet?
Bethany Wallace?
Hey, Bethany. Congratulations. Thank you. Are you... What do you write? Outstanding.
Caitlin Wallace?
Congratulations.
Caitlin, congratulations, and thank you so much. What's your bet?
Turtles.
Outstanding.
And Haley Wright?
Haley, so many times I've given you these things. Congratulations.
Coaches Rebecca Walter?
That's right.
Hey, congratulations. Thank you.
Sean Cutzel?
Sean, yeah. We're going to get you an award here. Thank you.
And our AD's with us today, Sue Lowry, as well.
Great to see you.
Hey, Sue. Thank you so much for your leadership. It means the world to us. Thank you.
While the coaches and AD are finishing up, if I could have the individual champions come up. You know who you are. We've already talked in the hallway. Come on back up. We have another certificate for you and an additional medal. So, the 1A state champion in the girls' 800-meter, 1600-meter, 3200-meter, and the 4x800-meter is Haley Wright. Congratulations, Haley.
Congratulations, Haley. There you go.
Haley was also the Herald Mail's Indoor Track Athlete of the Year. Girls 4x800, Emily Anderson.
Emily, congratulations.
Also in the 4x800, McKenna Luzier.
McKenna, congratulations. Thank you again.
4x800, Molly Jones.
Hey, Molly, congratulations again.
Isaiah and Jordan, if we could have you come for... Oh, thank you. Sorry, guys. Girls 500-meter run, Cameron Harper.
Congratulations, Cameron. All right.
Girls pole vault, Bethany Lohman.
Bethany, congratulations. We'll have to get you a second medal, because we...
I got one more.
Okay. All right. All right. So, now it's Isaiah.
It's because the coaches weren't supposed to get it. In the boys', high jump, Isaiah Elzy.
Isaiah, how high did you go?
About 10.
10? You jumped over me, brother.
And in the shot put, Jordan Churchy.
Hey, Jordan, congratulations. How far did you throw it?
43.3 inches.
Outstanding. Good job.
As we often do, we celebrate our team's academic success as well. The girls' indoor track team had a combined GPA of 3.90. Round of applause for the teams and the individuals. Smithsburg Individual Champs, if you could come forward.
3.90. 3.90?
First up is the 1A state champ in the girls' 55-meter dash, 300-meter dash, and 4x400, Lauren Daniels.
Congratulations, Lauren. Well done.
Also in the girls' 4x400, Kelsey Linden.
Kelsey, congratulations. Thank you so much.
4x400, Kara Poole.
Hey, Kara. Congratulations. Well done. Thank you.
4x400, Lindsay Penwell.
Lindsay, congratulations again. Thank you.
And our boys' individual champions in the 1600-meter run and 3200-meter run, Will Merritt.
Will, congratulations. I've enjoyed watching you run. Thank you.
In the boys' 500-meter and 800-meter run, Micah Dano.
Did I get it?
Dano, Dano.
Congratulations. Thank you, Micah.
Micah was also the Herald Mail Boys Indoor Track Athlete of the Year. Congratulations to everybody. Darren, if you could come forward. Darren is also a track state champion, 3A state champion in the boys' 3200-meter run from South High, Darren Harmon.
Good job.
If I could have all the wrestling state champions come forward, with North High first and Williamsport second. First up is Brian Stewart, the 3A, 4A state champion at 120 pounds. This is his second state championship. Aaron Brooks, the 3A, 4A state champ at 138.
Congratulations. Well done.
Also second.
Aaron, did you just win a national championship?
Isaiah Brooks, North High.
Congratulations, young man.
At 145 pounds. And I neglected to say that Aaron also just won a national championship in wrestling. His second. Thank you. That's North High. From Williamsport, 1A, 2A state champ, Justin Beckley, at 126 pounds.
Congratulations. Well done.
And Kobe Baker from Williamsport at 182 pounds.
Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Unfortunately, schedules did not allow Brandon Nagati from South Hagerstown High School to make it. I know Brandon was covered heavily in the Herald Mail recently. I just want to pay tribute to him and his state championship at 285 pounds. He is the Herald Mail Wrestler of the Year, and he's the first champion at South High since 1981. So, even though he's not here, give him a round of applause, please. That concludes this part of the program.
Not quite. One other thing is, the board members go back. Aaron, would you stand, please? We'd like to recognize, Aaron also this weekend completed a national championship in his weight class. So, you are sitting in front with a national champion. Congratulations, Aaron. Thank you.[1361.16][1361.16](Applause). Thank you, Coach Slick.
Thanks.
So far, student athletes, we know you want to get back to school, and you are all welcome to depart with your coaches and those who brought you here. But I think on behalf of the board and on behalf of all of us, the 3,000-plus employees who work in the school, we want to say thank you... Excuse me. We want to say thank you for the example that you provide to others in your schools and across this county. Your scholarship, your competitive spirit just means the world to us, because, quite honestly, there are all kinds of little eyes that are watching you, and they're aspiring to be like you as they get older. And so, you are providing kind of that boost that is necessary for a school system to become a great school system. A little bit later today, I'm going to talk to the board about the fact that U.S. News and World Report recently rated all of our high schools in Washington County as the top high schools in the United States. We had all of our schools were rated as either gold, silver, or bronze-rated high schools. And that really is because of you and the effort that you put forward. So, thank you very, very much for all you do each and every day. When you go back, be extra-nice to all your teachers, because they had something to do with it as well. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll just pause a moment if everyone would like to leave the room at this point.
Or you're welcome to stay. We really don't care if you want to know.
I think they'd rather go back to test than stay here.
Not these guys.
Anything else on your report at this point?
Not at this point. Later.
Okay. All right. We have no unfinished business, so we're moving to new business, consideration of the consent agenda. Ms. Freeman, Dr. Michael will back you up there.
Oh, great. Good afternoon.
Yes?
Five procurement actions are on your agenda this afternoon. The first item is our annual contract for maintenance to mechanical equipment, primarily the chillers throughout the school system. There are 19 schools that have chillers that should be maintained this spring. We have a roof replacement project for Fountain Rock Elementary School. That bid is being recommended for award to J&amp;K Contracting. That is the contractor who will also be replacing the roof at Boonsboro Middle School, and we have their bonding capabilities, and we're comfortable that they could handle both of those projects. We have a bid for network security assessment. We're looking for the hiring of a qualified and experienced firm which can provide a comprehensive network security assessment of our network environment, provided you with a little bit of information in the packet to kind of give you a feel for the scope of their contract. We have a bid for making some classroom spaces in Springfield Middle School. Currently, the seventh grade area is open, and this project will provide some demolition and create three additional classrooms there. And the fifth item on the consent agenda is an extension of our contract with Control Systems Incorporated for ongoing building automation, energy management, and air conditioning controls that we have standardized throughout the district. Mr. Michael's here and others, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. A motion on the consent agenda, please.
Madam President, I move to approve the following bids and proposals. First, for annual maintenance service, annual maintenance service to mechanical equipment to Boylan Train Services, Inc., $52,220. Roof replacement at Fountain Rock Elementary School to J&amp;K Contracting, Inc., at $768,000. Network security assessment to Securance, LLC, at $50,203. Springfield Middle School classroom renovation to Milton Stamper Builders at $338,400. And building automation, energy management, and ATC maintenance and repairs, second extension to Control Systems, Inc., at $228,500.
Thank you, Mr. Ridnauer. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. All right. Floor is open for questions on the consent agenda. Mr. Wright?
Just one. One question quickly. Boy, the Springfield Middle School renovation, is that a summer project?
That's a summer project in the seventh grade area. When you first enter the building, go down the ramp and turn to the right, you start up a ramp, and you can actually look down into classrooms. So, it's kind of that area, and up on that first deck, we're going to try to wall in a couple of those open classrooms, is the nature of that project.
And that won't be a problem to finish complete?
No, it'll get finished during that time period. We're also adding lockers there. And also, as you enter that project, it just has a set of double doors, but no real way to restrict the flow of traffic once you get in the building. So, there's a little vestibule effort going to go on there as well.
Great. Thank you.
Additional questions? Hands went up at the same time. Mrs. Harshman?
The air conditioning requisition for servicing the chiller, chillers at the schools, I noticed that these are all exactly the same price down to Marshall Street. Are they based on, like, the size of the chiller, or how many there are? Is... I'm not real good on air conditioning.
I think it's based on the model of the chiller, maybe how hard it is to service. Some of them are like $1,700, some of them are like $3,400. It might have to do with how many technicians have to come. I'm not exactly sure. But this is just like servicing your air conditioning at home, where you would tune it up and keep it in good repair. When you think about how large our chillers are, this is a great investment for 19 different schools to get them all tuned up, keep them in good shape for the year for $52,000.
Do any of these schools have more than one chiller?
Yes. But it doesn't necessarily follow the math they're exactly right. So, it has to do... They know the complexity of each unit, the age of each unit, and the size of each unit, and some of it's driven by that.
I will also say the proposal has a great, much more detail than what I've been provided to the board in terms of the scope of what they're doing for each of these schools.
Yeah, I was just curious, because you have, like, South High... Yeah, I was just curious because you have like South High and Rockland Woods, and I'm thinking, how can they both be the same price? But like I said, air conditioning, I just want it on. That's all. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes, I had a question about renovations at Springfield. Have we used the successful bidder in the past for similar interior renovations? I know we, I remember this from work done at Fairview, I believe. We had approved some work to be done at Fairview. Have we used?
They just completed the fire tower at Fairview. The contractor is also working on CES building right now. They've completed many projects for us.
Okay, so they've done similar?
Yes.
Interior renovations. So, and then my second question was about the Securants consulting. There were no other bidders for this work?
There were 13.
Network security?
Yes, there were 13 bidders.
Oh, okay, I guess I overlooked.
I didn't put the spreadsheet in in large part because of the range of the bids and without additional explanations about the different scopes and approaches. I didn't want to get too overly complicated, but this bidder that's being recommended was the second lowest cost bidder.
Okay. Have we conducted such an assessment in the past? Or is this something new?
We have conducted similar assessments in the past. As Ms. Freeman pointed out, I think we had a range of bids from like $19,000 to $250,000. The upper end bids were doing like way over the top what would need to be done for a school system. The low bidder may or may not have had the whole scope of what we needed to have completed. We followed what was needed for the Maryland Legislative Audit and also best practices from one of the national groups for school systems. So we feel like we're very well, you know, this will do a really good job of testing, you know, and the whole thing is really about security. Can they penetrate our network, you know, from social media, from, you know, various systems that we have? So it's all about security and our firewall and the ability to, hopefully, the inability to penetrate our network. But it'll give us any weak spots that we have, anything we might need to work on and recommendations and things like that. And it's done regularly with businesses, and it's been done in the past with the school system.
Thank you. Additional? Dr. Harding's.
Thank you. Dr. Michael, you know the question I ask every time there's one of these bids on there, so I'll just ask it again. Item number two, the roof replacement at Fountain Rock, that's being paid for with $401,000 of state CIP funds. Normally, those would be funds that would be matched locally through the, through our CIP. I see these, this is being matched through our general fund at $367,000. What does that bring our total to this year? Well, first of all, I assume that we're matching it with operating funds because we don't have CIP dollars available to match the state contribution.
That's correct. FY16 is one of the first years that we haven't had county local CIP dollars to match our state projects. We've talked about this a couple of times in the past. We found out late last spring that there'd be $0, and we've been planning in the maintenance budget as well as support from the board from quarterly adjustments. At this point, the support, the four roof projects that we've awarded to date, including this fourth one today, we're at about $1.6 million of allocation towards the projects. We have one more roof project that's been approved by the state. It's phase one of South High. We'd estimate that to be between $40,000 and $50,000. It'll need to come from the general fund to support that. In addition to that, one of the roof projects, the Clear Spring High School roof project was supported with state, excuse me, with county FY15 money. That was only made possible by a decision made by Dr. Wilcox to save some of that money and use general fund money last year, $676,000, to support the Tech High roof. So in essence, the general fund has supported Tech High roof for $676,000 as well as this $1.6 million towards roofs at this point, normally all supported by our county CIP funding.
So if I do the math correctly, that's $2.3 million in operating funds over the last roughly year that we've spent on?
Yeah, I'd say less than 13 months.
Matching state contributions for capital projects locally.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I add on to that question? If we had not used operating dollars, the $2.3 million, what money would we have left on the table at the state? Is it a two to one?
You can almost, yeah, double that money. So four to five million dollars, yes.
That we would have lost.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Additional questions? Okay. The consent agenda, the question is on Mr. Ridenhour's motion. All those in favor? Okay. Seven zero, and student concurs with the?
Abstain.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Gessford, let the record reflect, is abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some policies, some first reads. Mr. Trotta. First reading of proposed changes to policy KD, opportunity for public comment at board meetings.
Thank you. The Policy Committee conducted a review of policy KD and is re-recommending the following modifications. The first is that the policy be placed in the standard format as noted in policy BG. The second is with regard to the, each of the types of meetings that are addressed in this policy, and it addresses business meetings, town meetings, and public hearings, the language has been modified to provide that a person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting. And it should also be noted that the modified policy includes a new purpose clause, and a sentence has been added to the background section which concerns the importance of public comment. I'm glad to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion on this first read.
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy KD entitled Opportunity for Public Comment at Board Business Meetings, Town Meetings, and Public Hearings and the Procedures Governing Such Proceedings.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Questions on policy KD? Mrs. Harshman. Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Fisher, would you like to speak to your motion?
I just want to say that these changes bring in line this policy with past practice. We have been offering other citizens who have not signed up the opportunity to speak at most of our meetings, and at the same time, we took the opportunity to put this into the newer format that we're using now.
Thank you. Mrs. Harshman.
I'm just wondering how individuals who come to the meeting and do not sign up because they weren't intending to speak can pass out copies of a written comment because this says that that's what they are to do. So if they have not signed up and planned to speak, how would they do that?
I assume they could send them in later.
Absolutely. I mean, we can make that optional. I will tell you, in my experience, very few speakers actually hand in comments.
I know.
Whether they've signed up or not.
Even though it does say in the policy that they should do that. I'm just thinking something needs to be addressed there because they would not have them with them if they did not intend to speak.
Or they just may have arrived late. Dr. Harding's.
Yes, that was actually one of the comments that was on my list is encouraging the, I mean, I will support the first read, understanding that the Policy Committee is going to take this back and perhaps continue to work on it based on the comments today. But I agree with Mrs. Harshman. I think that we ought to do something with that language which requires a written copy of their comments. I think we want to do all we can to encourage people to participate, and if we're going to try to force them to provide written comments, I think that just acts as a deterrent. And while I think it is beneficial for us to have written copies, I don't think it's so beneficial that we can't hear what they have to say unless they provide them. So I would encourage the committee to take another look at that before the second read.
And I would say best practice, we've never enforced that, so this is a good time to clean that up as well. Mrs. Fisher, you had a comment?
Just want to say that that word encouraged could very easily be inserted here instead of, you know, must do it, they encourage to.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes, on page 2 of 2, under Procedures for Town Meetings, I don't recall having experienced a town meeting, so I'm not really sure on what specific topics would be presented or what kind of dialogue might take place. I'm wondering if it's really necessary to set a two-hour time limit on such a meeting. I'm thinking that if individuals take time to come and they want to express a concern or express support for something, why would we not want to sit for as long as it would take to receive that information from the public? That's one question. And then my other question would be with regard to reducing the five-minute time period, depending on the number of persons who wish to speak. Again, if someone comes and wants to express a concern or share information at such a meeting, why would we want to limit the amount of time they could speak based on the number of people that are here to express that desire to share their information or their concern? So I question those two things.
Point of clarification?
Mrs. Fisher.
Are you suggesting we do away with time limits altogether?
I am.
I don't think that would be very practical. You could have someone come, a series of people come and each speak for half an hour or an hour if you have no time limits.
For the two-hour limit, I would like to see that removed. And again, I have no problem with limiting the speaker to five minutes, but to reduce that five minutes based on the number of people who wish to speak, I see that as an issue. I think if someone shows up, they should be entitled to five minutes, and if it means that we have to sit here for another hour, then so be it.
I understand you better now. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Harding's.
Yes, just one other, maybe it's a detail, but in Section 3A in the introductory paragraph there, I'll just read the first sentence. It says that each public business meeting of the Board of Education, an opportunity will be provided for individuals to speak to matters relating to the operations of Washington County public schools. The word that bothers me there is operations. I think that has a particular meaning to all of us, and I don't think we're intending to limit comments to operations. It certainly could be related to policy or budget or any, any number of redistricting. Those are all decisions the board makes with the superintendent's advice, so I would just find another word or way to express, I think, what the committee's intention is so that there's just no confusion.
Which item?
Item 3A, the first sentence, under 3A.
And it does say in one further on that?
It does.
May address any topic concerning, so it appears that we need to align those statements. Thank you. Additional comments? Reminding everyone, this is the first read. It's the time to give us your feedback, the Policy Committee. Mrs. Harshman.
Back over to the town meetings. Would it be possible to change will be limited to five minutes to may be limited to five minutes, and then the next sentence says that it could be increased or decreased depending upon how many people were there? But if we choose to make it five minutes or more, depending on that, maybe those could be combined some way?
Based on the circumstances.
Right, depending on how many people were there and want to speak.
That is noted.
Thank you.
Additional comments before we vote on the first read? Question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion. All those in favor? Mr. Ridenhour, okay. Seven zero, and student concurs with the majority. Thank you. Our second first read of the afternoon, a proposal, proposed changes to policy DIFA, fraud reporting and follow-up. Mr. Trotta.
Thank you. The Policy Committee conducted a review of policy DIFA. By way of background, this policy was adopted in response to a request of the State Office of Legislative Audits. The Policy Committee is offering the following recommended changes to the current policy. First, that the policy be placed in the proper format as noted in policy BG, that the following definitions be added to the policy, financial irregularities, improper governmental activity, public-private partnerships, and school-based groups. Another recommendation is that a purpose clause should be added, and this purpose clause should indicate that the policy is to set forth procedures for reporting financial irregularities and improper governmental activities. Another provision was added to this policy near the end of the document which provides that an employee who files a report will not be subject to retaliation. And finally, the updated policy would have a new title. That new title would read as follows, Reporting of Financial Irregularities and Improper Governmental Activities by Stakeholders and School Employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. A motion on this first read.
Madam President, I move to approve the first read of proposed changes to policy DIFA entitled Fraud Reporting and Follow-Up.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Mrs. Fisher, you want to speak to your motion?
Not right now, thanks.
Okay. Any questions on the first read? Mrs. Harshman.
I just was wondering, the only thing left in black, is that the only thing that comes from the original policy?
That was the policy.
That was, that was the whole thing?
That was the whole policy. That was what we had originally.
I didn't check that, but wow. Okay, I would like to suggest that number four, Part B, that number one be moved down as number two, and number two be moved up as number one, I think to negate the filing of it with the warning first. Seems to me that that should come after the idea that someone is interested in filing this, and then a reminder. I think almost everyone already knows that you do not file false reports, but it just seems like it's make sure this isn't a false report, and then information about what you do. So I'd like to see those two reversed.
Could you? Additional questions? Comments? Reaction to that? Dr. Harding's?
Not a reaction to that. Somebody else does.
Any reaction to? We'll take that under consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Harding's?
Yes, I'd just like to ask the committee to consider whether there's a need to add the clause about the superintendent promulgating administrative regulations to support the policy, whether that's needed in here.
Is that something we've added to all of our? I'm just asking. Mrs. Fisher? Mr. Trotta?
That's language that, for the three years I was on the Policy Committee, we put into any policy where there might be a need for regulations.
Absolutely.
And I think here, there clearly might be a need for regulations if we're insisting that all reports are going to be investigated. It may very well be that there's a need to write a regulation for how that investigation will take place and chain of communications, whatever. So just consider whether that should be put in.
Thank you. Good point. Additional items for consideration by the Policy Committee? Question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion, then. All those in favor? Okay. Seven zero, student concurs. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. All right, that brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Wilcox?
Yes, thank you. What I would like to do with the board's permission is reverse the order, and I'd like to have Jeff Prue come forward, introduce his guests, our friends, share our strength. Jeff is going to do a report on our Food and Nutrition Services outreach efforts, and then I will come back shortly and talk about some of the things. then I will come back shortly and talk about some of the things that I think are important to the Board.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Dr. Wilcox, members of the Board, Sherman Brightman. It's my pleasure today to present to you just some items on sort of what Food and Nutrition Services does that is outside of the realm of what we normally have considered school meals and lunch. And with me today is Quanie Drabow, who's an Outreach Coordinator with Share Our Strength and the No Kid Hungry Maryland Campaign. And Deb, is that going to show here as well? Okay, I didn't know if it was going to show here. Okay. So opening slide, just to share with you, this is just a sundry of some of the various programs that are all federally based that Washington County Public Schools involves in. So we do breakfast, we do lunch, we do after-school meals, we do a fresh fruit and vegetable program, we're involved heavily in summer meal programs, and then we've off-shooted into a branch there that is our mobile meals program. And we'll quickly run through each of these programs. Specifically, breakfast has become our second-largest program. We serve about 8,500 breakfasts a day. You can see that 7,600 of those actually take place actually in the classroom, direct to students. We have, thank you, Dr. Wilcox. We serve breakfast every school and every day, except for the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, where those students actually have the ability to get breakfast at their hub school before grabbing the bus into Barbara Ingram. Twenty-seven schools actually serve breakfast in the classroom. And new this year, we're launching two free model grab-and-go programs that are variations off Maryland Meals for Achievement. This is a pilot we're doing in conjunction with MSD to see if there's an opportunity and a way that we can tweak the legislative language in the Maryland Meals for Achievement program to address better the students' needs in terms of breakfast and actually pull breakfast service out of the classroom. And we're also offering four new grab-and-go paid models that we're doing in conjunction with Quanie's group, where they've supplied some grant money for that program. In after-school meals, this is really a program that is available after-school when an enrichment component is available. So it may be a club after-school, it might be homework help, it might be an after-school care program like a YMCA. Thirty-five sites are eligible for this program in Washington County, and we'll do about 130,000 of those meals this year. And really, this is our greatest opportunity for growth. This program is probably just scratching the surface of what the opportunities are within the county. Fruit and Vegetable Program is an opportunity to expose students in high-poverty locations to fruits and vegetables, fresh products, that they probably don't see at home. And so we get an allocation of $50 per student per year. We generally have a snack twice a week outside of the meal program, either mid-morning or mid-afternoon. And up on the screen are just a handful of the items that we give our students an opportunity to try that are outside of the mainstream, in addition to, you know, general apples and oranges and bananas and things. But we get an opportunity for them to really try some different stuff. And one of the things we've seen over the years is students who go to Farm to School Week and see an Asian pear. Comparatively to our students who have not seen them in a fresh fruit and vegetable program, those students wonder what the funky-looking apple is, but our fresh fruit and vegetable students definitely know what the Asian pear is. Summer meals for us takes multiple components. We work in both school sites, park and recreation sites, we have our Meal Machine Mobile program. You see the numbers up there in terms of the numbers of meals that we served in 2015. About 71,000 meals went out. And I'll talk about each of them very quickly on their own merits. Summer school courses, you know, in the sites, both in summer enrichment programs as well as just open feeding sites, where some of our schools will just be open for breakfast, for lunch. Bring your child in during a particular time and we're there to feed your students, and you can see the numbers of meals of the program that were demoted or indicated by that program. Summer Park and Rec is a program that we took complete ownership of about two or three years ago, when the Community Action Council decided that they were getting out of this particular program. We brought all of those programs in-house and took them under our wing. So we're partnering with groups like the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Clubs, USMA, Hagerstown Community College, to service students that are in enrichment programs that are outside of Washington County school locations, and we're providing breakfast and lunch to students in those programs as well. Our Meal Machine, I think you all know well, every opportunity I get, we want to talk about the Meal Machine. It's sort of our little baby, we nurture it. But again, it doesn't happen without coordination with community partners, and you see a number of those partners on the screen. And it is, you know, easily a third of our meals go out in a Meal Machine program. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Quanie, and he can share with you some of the items from his slides.
Thank you. Okay, so I work with No Kid Hungry, and our primary goal is to eliminate childhood hunger. And the way we go about doing that is trying to reach children where they live, learn, and play. So with that in mind, we go ahead and we can go ahead and get into our agenda, and that'll be an introduction into No Kid Hungry, the regional hunger status in Washington County, and all the work that No Kid Hungry is doing currently or recently in Washington County. And we'll finally conclude with the success of the Food and Nutrition Service in the county.
Jeff, could you advance the slides for him?
Thank you. I appreciate that. So the purpose of our organization, as I said, is to eliminate childhood hunger, and we go about doing that by reaching kids through breakfast programs, federal breakfast programs. We also work with after-school programs, and we work on summer meal programs. We provide grant funding for organizations and schools that look to expand their summer meal programs and after-school programs and breakfast programs so that kids can perform better in school. There have been studies conducted that clearly show that kids who start off their day with a great meal, such as a healthy breakfast, they perform better in school, math tests, math scores go up, attendance in those schools are higher. And in addition to that, you would see an overall better behavior patterns from all the students. So teachers have less reasons to send the kids to the principal's office. Currently, Washington County is outperforming all other counties in the region. So Allegheny County, as you may see in the red, they are not even doing half of the amount of meals, or disseminating half the amount of meals that Washington County is. Participation in Washington County is also 20% to 30% greater than Frederick County. Please go to the next slide. One of the major successes of Washington County this past year was participation in the Breakfast Challenge. Every school within this county participated in the Breakfast Challenge, and the Breakfast Challenge in our organization is quite a big deal because we offer funding for those who go ahead and win the challenge, and that is $1,000 towards the regional, well, the district champion, and for the statewide champion, they get $5,000. And out of all the counties in Maryland, Washington County was the only county to have every school enrolled into the challenge. Smithsburg Elementary School was the district winner, and we just presented them with a $1,000 check about two weeks ago. And recently, we've disseminated $4,800 in grant funding to four different schools for alternative breakfast programs, and the one that they will be employing will be grab-and-go breakfast, where the kids will have option of grabbing breakfast from a kiosk. And whenever they do that, the amount of children eating breakfast usually increases in the school, and all the other trickle-down effects that I mentioned earlier with regards to improvements within the school start occurring. Last year, we also assisted Washington County Food and Nutrition Services by granting them $15,000 towards their summer meals programs, and that was to help deliver more meals through the, what is it, the-
The Meal Machine.
The Meal Machine. And we will look like, we look as if we were going to grant more money to them again this summer, but that will be known in the next, I'd say, week or two. So listen out, you may be getting a few more thousand dollars.
Keep it coming.
All right. So even though I've talked a little bit about all the work that Maryland No Kid Hungry is doing in the county, none of this work would be capable if it wasn't for the outstanding job that the FNS Service is doing here. And under the leadership of Jeff, they've managed to go ahead and truly become one of the top-notch counties in the entire state. And with that in mind, we would like to present Jeff with this plaque for all the magnificent work that he is continually doing. So thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
You're making all the kids in the county healthier and wiser.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. There's one simple and small request that I have for each and every Board member and the superintendent. We would love for you to all become No Kid Hungry champions, and you can do that by promoting the after-school meals, breakfast in class, grab-and-go breakfast in all breakfast programs, and/or just doing more to promote the summer meal programs. We know that Jeff is doing a magnificent job, and we would love for each one of you to do something complimentary within your respective districts.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
We'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, thoughts? Mrs. Williams?
Yes, with regard to the open feeding sites and the summer meal machine, these are truly open to any child and any family member? Is that correct?
That's correct. It's open to any child age 18 and under. They can get to any one of the locations.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions? I will just add that, Jeff, how long have you been with the school system?
I believe it's eight years here in July.
I was thinking, you came on just shortly after I came on, and I have watched the high level of engagement with all the schools and the very innovative and creative. I know you're considered around the state to be the go-to resource for information on feeding children. And I just want to say thank you. You're a huge asset to this county and to the state and to the children. So I do have one question. One is legislative, and you may know the status. There is, was a piece of legislation going through to make grab-and-go mandated before a certain hour in the day in the morning, and there was a lot of concern that some schools, because of bus schedules and just a lack of awareness of a case-by-case situation. Do you know if that's gone anywhere?
I don't believe so. I think the bill you may be referring to, and I don't have the number-
I don't either.
-mandated breakfast in schools with certain free and reduced percentages, and it was a declining number over the next three years. So it was sort of a phased-in implementation, I think, starting at 80, schools 85% above, moving down to 80, moving down to 75, three years out. That is a program to have breakfast available in every school, actually, free breakfast, I believe, in all of the schools that would fall into that category, but I don't believe it's made it out of committee. Quanie, I don't know if you-
No, that bill is not moving the session.
It seemed a little restrictive in not taking in some local issues, even though it had a good objective. The way they were trying to get to that was, I think, unworkable.
I think the challenge as well, and why it maybe hasn't gained a lot of support, is it is an unfunded bill. It doesn't indicate whether it's local money, federal money, state money, it's just you have to do it. In all likelihood, that falls to the local, and I think that's why it's not gaining a lot of support.
Very good.
Jeff, before you leave the table, would you talk a little bit about our Taste of Washington County event that we had recently? I'm not sure all the Board members were privy to that.
Absolutely, I'd love to. On Monday, March 21, which was the Monday of spring break week, Food and Nutrition Services hosted an evening food show for our families to come out to South Hagerstown High to meet our vendors and to sample. I think we had about 75 different products that were available for families to sample to get really a sense of what it is that we're serving their children. Some of the items are standing menu items that we've had on the menu, others were new items that we wanted to get the community's take on. We developed a survey that we were actually able to implement through South High's iPads. So as families entered the cafeteria, they were issued an iPad for the evening to do on-the-spot surveys as they were tasting product. We received great response. We were able to compare products. So if we had, let's say, two different mashed potatoes or two different chicken products, we could pit them head-to-head essentially from the survey perspective and get honest feedback from the families that attended. We had about 120 individuals that came, roughly 40 different families that came to the event, and this is something that I think we'll continue to do in the future. Our vendor network was hugely supportive and very willing to come back. So I think this will be the first of many that we'll be hosting in Washington County.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jeff will keep coming back to these meetings if he keeps getting accolades. Last month, he got something, this month he gets something, that's all good. So Board members, let me just share a few items with you as kind of the conclusion of the superintendent's report today. First of all, I do want to mention the comments that Mr. Darder made earlier about our YouTube programming. If you go to our channel, that's hosted by Washington County Public Schools, you won't see any of the lifted content that then has been edited or something. But if you go to YouTube, we can't control what happens on YouTube. But our channel, you won't see those things on, and that's what we can control, Mr. Darder. But we will also continue to monitor our channel as well. That said, I've tasked Jamie Haye through text messaging to kind of double-check of the site so the Board members can rest assured that we're conscious of that channel. In addition to that, I want to point out, as I pointed out to some of you earlier today, Mr. Wright has recently informed me that all of our eligible high schools have been honored by U.S. News Magazine as being the best high schools in America. Barbara Ingram was rated the 15th-best high school in the state and is a Gold Ribbon Award or Gold Medal Award winner. I am not sure now what other status our high schools are, but I'll get that to the Board members shortly. I also want to inform the Board of a conversation that I had with Carol Gilbert. She is with the Maryland Department of Housing. She called last week to indicate the Secretary of Housing's interest in our downtown project. I referred her to Mr. Murray, who has assured me that he will follow up with her. She said the Secretary was very interested in helping us to increase our educational footprint downtown. They were very interested in the project, and they'll be working again with Mr. Murray going forward. Several other events and activities I want to point out is Saturday, April 9, coming up is our Diversity Recruitment Day. Our applicants will come here to this building at 9:00 a.m., and then the HR team is facilitating some tours at South Hagerstown High, Williamsport Middle, Western Heights. They will cruise downtown to Bispa, slide by Besta, and then they'll come here for an interview day on campus as we work to create a more diverse workforce. In that same vein, on Thursday, April 21, the Diversity Coalition will be meeting at the United Bank Center. Bank President, Group President Ronnie Bresler has graciously offered to host this meeting. And those of you who are on the Board who are part of our diversity initiatives will know that this is our effort to bring together large employers in the district who might also have needs to create more diverse workforces so that we can perhaps attack this problem as a team, particularly when we look at families where two adults are working. Maybe one will come to the school system, one will come to one of the other industries. So we think that it has great promise. Also, I'm excited to announce that on May 21, we will have the inaugural 5K Wellness Run Walk at the CES Center. We will take up to 500 runners for our first event. There will be a 7:30 a.m. check-in on that same day, May 21, and the Race Walk will begin at 9:00 a.m. There will be a wellness fair here on the campus so that folks who are interested in becoming healthier and living a more balanced life can come and get information from us. There is a $10 race entry fee or registration fee, and for that, you'll get a T-shirt, and of course, everybody wins a medal because that's the kind of society we are today. We will also have on May 19, our Elementary Citizenship Awards Ceremony. This year, it will be in the evening at North High School. I hope some of you as Board members can come. It's always an uplifting event to see hundreds of young students who are being recognized for their citizenship, for their, really, their contributions to their local schools. In addition to that, I want to mention that our Fine Arts Program, of course, is alive and well. If you are a Facebook fan, you probably have seen Michelle Rafter's posting. A little bit of shout-out to the Williamsport Crew, they're having their play this weekend. I believe it's Mary Poppins at Williamsport. But across the county, there are plays this weekend and next weekend. The Barbara Ingram Center has six performances that are taking off of the Maryland Theater. Friday night is their opening gala. Mr. Reidner, will you help me with what they're doing this year? I just lost it in my Little Mermaid.
Little Mermaid.
Thank you. I'll never be, live that one down for forgetting that. Rob will have me. But there are just a number of great things happening around the county. If you are looking for something to do in the area of theater and performing arts, our kids are doing some great- kids are doing some great things this weekend. But that also points me to, we have our first annual Honors Recital Sunday, April 10, at the Bowman Recital Hall at the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts. These are some of our finest young musicians. They have been adjudicated in various competitions, and ultimately, they have been picked as some of the best of the best. And they will be performing in the afternoon on April 10 at the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts. There'll be more information on our website. The last couple of items that I want to bring up are simply these. You may have read in the paper that the Whispering Hills challenge that we've been presented with, with kind of the low ground and the walk path that gets flooded, we're continuing to monitor that. We're also proposing some short-term and longer-term solutions. I just did not want the board to think that we had forgotten that or that we had dropped the ball on that. But I think quite honestly, it's going to be a solution that involves many different parties and not just the school system. And then finally, I wanted to say thank you to the board for supporting the digital learning plan. We have 12,000 new iPads deployed around the district. I'm hearing great things about what's happening. Many of our young people now are using them on a daily basis in their classrooms. Great teachers are finding new and novel ways to use those devices within the classrooms. I'm actually seeing some young people who are taking them home in the evening, which is a bit of a surprise to me that people are that quickly embracing the technology, but it's a great thing and a great problem to have. We also are looking at how we will distribute some of those iPads over the summer to our classroom teachers so they have experiences with the technologies that they'll be using in the classrooms in the fall. And we are also right now, just days away, from repurposing the MacBook Pros that our teachers will have to support their classroom instruction and their access to not only our digital portals, but resources that are at their fingertips from various other sources. So lots of great things going on in the school district, lots of really positive news, and I thank you as board members for helping to create the environment in which that happens. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. Exciting time in Washington County. Great. That takes us to personnel. Mrs. Francisco.
Mrs. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your review and approval this afternoon.
Thank you. Motion on personnel action?
Move to approved personnel action as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Second?
Second.
Dr. Hardings. Thank you. All those in favor? Those opposed? Those abstaining? So we have five approval to opposing and one abstention. The student abstains from personnel. Thank you. Brings us to reports to the board. We have in 2016, 2025 enrollment forecasts Chad Criswell and Deanna Newman. Welcome.
I'll be right back, Chad. But go ahead and start.
Good afternoon, President Breton, Vice President Hardings.
But you're gonna miss the best part.
I'll be back, members of the board. I am here today with Deanna Newman from Public Pathways Incorporated, our demographer, and we are going to present the 2016 through 2025 enrollment projections. And with that, I will hand it over to Ms. Newman to begin the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me back. Etienne, am I doing that? Yes. Or am I doing this?
Just use that.
This.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought I actually would start with a little look at what's going on regionally, because it does affect us. If it doesn't affect us next year, it will affect us at some point in the future. In March, the National Census Bureau do actually do an update of their demographic information, and since that's all they do, they get a little excited about it. And usually, there's plenty of headlines telling us what's going on, and I thought maybe I would start there. In addition, shortly thereafter, the Washington Metropolitan Council of Governments also does a projection that although we are not a member of that particular group, we are just outside of that region. The Census Bureau, actually, in looking at what's been happening the last couple of years in terms of population shifts, suggests that we are back to the '90s, that people are moving to the Sun Belt, they're moving to the suburbs in the way in which they were back in the late 1990s. The growing areas this past year were Florida, Texas, Georgia, South Carolina. The declining areas were Pennsylvania, Ohio, Michigan, what I guess would be the old Rust Belt, were the declining areas. And when we look at just the Washington-Baltimore metropolitan area, and actually, according to the Census Bureau, that Washington-Baltimore area is the fourth-largest metropolitan area in terms of population that they track. And what they're telling us is that that area is growing, but not growing at quite the same pace that it was, let's say, 10 years ago. But it is definitely growing in that the big growth areas there are no surprise. It's Northern Virginia, and it's the I-270 corridor, which would be that area for us that's important between Rockville and Frederick. Frederick is their furthest county that they go out. Cog took that information and basically did a projection this year suggesting that by 2045, 30 years from now, that the Washington metro area would grow by 1.5 million people and that it would add about a million jobs. I don't know how they're going to get to their jobs knowing the traffic in that area. Maybe they're going to figure out some other way to do it, or maybe the jobs are actually going to be further out into the suburbs. And I think that for us, again, we are, when you look at this map up here, we are actually in the dark green area, whereas Cog is really talking about the light green. No doubt, that kind of growth in the Washington metro area is going to ultimately bleed out here into Washington County. Maybe not next year or even five years from now, but I would think within the 10-year period, we would begin to feel some of that impact as well, if indeed, that's where the growth is going to go. I thought it was an interesting projection on their part. I have no idea on what basis they make that. When you go out 30 years, obviously, you're making a lot of assumptions about growth, but I'm sure it's based in migration, on the health of the economy in the Washington area, how it's fairly recession-proof, and a lot of people feel that that's a pretty stable environment when they have choices of places that they want to live. So I just thought that I would share, just kind of start off with sharing how I think that might ultimately impact us here. The— I'm going too fast here. So going back to Washington County, this past year, we grew by very, very little, but only as a result of pre-K. We had anticipated that we were not going to grow this year, and we'll talk a little bit about some of the reasons why we didn't anticipate that. We actually did a little better than we had projected. We, not a lot, you know, 15 more elementary kids and 15 more middle kids and about 20 more high school kids. So we did grow, we did a little bit better than we had anticipated, and most of that was due to in-migration and the impact of housing, even though I don't think that there's been a dramatic change in the number of building permits that we've been building. We're pretty steady there.
One thing I'm going to just chime in from the presentation we gave to the board back in November, just to avoid any confusion, this is the space number. This is the total full-time equivalent student. The number we presented back in November, we showed we were down on our compensatory funding number, our K-12 number, by about 49 students. So I didn't want there to be any confusion saying, well, you guys said you had dropped, and now you're saying you grew. It's due to the pre-K number. So I just wanted to clarify that really quickly. Sorry.
Right, right. You can see, for example, our pre-K here is up 75, which shows 26%, but actually, if you look, we only looked K-12, it would be down to 49 students. Right? And actually, you see on this chart here, it actually shows that the K-12 number is down, not as much as it was last year. Last year, it was down a couple hundred. This year, it was just down that 50 students. And just a reminder, as I go into the basis for the numbers, I use a standard cohort model trend analysis to do the base number. I use birth information that comes from the state. I have GIS input that I receive from Chad, and it helps a lot in terms of my ability to look at the transitions from elementary to middle to high. I look at housing starts. We have great cooperation from the city and from the county to provide us building permit information and where we have active developments and what's going on. And so I have a tremendous amount of information, which allows the projections to be as close as they are. I like to be within at least one-half of 1%, and that's been pretty easy most of the time. This year, we actually have a little bit of lottery in the sense that we do have boundary changes. And so we'll talk a little bit about how I've incorporated the boundary changes in, but only until we get next year will we find out whether students are actually where we had anticipated them to be. Particularly with the opening of a new school, it's always a little risky that that will be a little different than what we had anticipated. So I won't go into—most of you have heard me give this presentation before and probably could give it by heart, so I won't talk too much about how the survivorship method works, but simply that I look at how many students become first grade, from first grade become second grades the following year. That trend analysis is usually pretty good over short stretches of time and over fairly large groups of students. But we had anticipated this past year, there's two kinds of growth that I track. One of them is, I call rollover, but it's also called natural growth, if you follow population projections, and that is how many fifth graders are leaving and kindergarteners are coming in. That's cyclical growth. It's not the kind of growth that has any long-term impact on the overall enrollment. And the other one is the number of students who could actually move in, who were not in our system last year, who are in our system this year, and that's net, obviously not on a student-by-student basis. This year, we had in-migration of 52. I think this is why our numbers are up just a little bit, because that's not supported necessarily by last year's building permit activities. It's really supported by probably the last three years of building activity that actually gives us that kind of in-migration. The, probably the big story has been, yeah, has really been what's going on with kindergarten and what's going on with births. You know, back in 2012, actually, not 2012, it would have been 2007, we had births registered in the county of 1985. Then the housing market collapsed and the recession hit, and student people stopped having babies as often or as much. And within two years, we had lost 200 students from the, 200 births, which ultimately translated to 200 kindergartner students for us. Initially, we thought that it would only last for the three years of the recession, but when we came out of the recession, the birth, the fertility rate in the country did not go back up again. And so we are actually projecting, according to the state, and I take these birth numbers from the state, so the numbers all the way through 2019 are actual birth numbers, and the numbers in 2020 and 21 are actually their projections. But they are projecting eight years of down 200 to 250 in the births, which would translate for us to almost 2,000 students down from where we thought we were going to be back in 2007 or 2012, when we were looking at that. The implications for us, and I've got to keep this going, is been that over the years, our projection has been slowly, slowly, slowly coming down, and we have not had the commensurate growth to make it happen. So you see the decline both last year and this year in terms of our elementary growth. I think a lot of what's going on is related to, first, the housing recession, the housing bust in the recession. But then what's happening is this new generation, this Generation X, often called the millennials, who are actually in their 20s and early 30s, are marrying late, they're having their children late. The fertility rate is down. It's been the lowest ever since they began recording fertility rates in the country. It's at 62.9 per 1,000 women. This past year, we actually had, it's now up 1%. It's hard to say when we make a turn, are they going to start having babies now? And it is the 30-year-olds who apparently are having babies now. We'll have to wait and see. If it's up again 1% next year and up again 1% after that, then we have an avalanche. Then we have more, we can look at rising birth rates and an increase in our enrollment, but we'd be commensurate with that. I think the other thing that's really interesting, that we all think that this particular generation is moving to the city, and indeed, about 30% of them actually are moving to the cities, but that means 70% of them are not. And that 70%, they're living pretty much where their parents lived. If they grew up in the suburbs, they're living in the suburbs. If they grew up in the country, many times, they're staying exactly where they are. So we don't have to worry that we're not going to get young people moving out to this area. I think it's kind of overstated that that would happen. So the middle, the middle schools, we had very little in-migration. Isn't that funny? So we have in-migration in our elementaries, but not in our middles. That's not uncommon when people move into new housing in particular, for them to move in with younger children and for it then to age into our middles and our highs. We did expect a little bit of growth in our middles and did not get, and got a little bit more than we had anticipated. With our high school, we're always looking at the ninth grade. If the ninth grade is larger than the ninth grade before, we tend to think of it as being growing. We have obviously some legislation that may also be impacting what's happening in our high schools related to mandatory attendance and actually, and maybe even in a couple of years, early graduations. So they might actually compensate for each other. I'm not sure. We're going to have to wait and see how that comes out. I'm not showing that 100% of them always stay. I'm very conservative in terms of my projections that way. Wait and see what happens. So one of the things about housing, and I think I was suggesting, is that we often think that with housing, if we say that the student yield is .33, that that's in fact going to happen the next year. Sometimes it's delayed. Sometimes the relationship between the housing and growth is not immediate and it's not directly correlated. But again, over time and over large space, it may indeed be a relationship between the new housing and so on. So our building permit activity was very similar to last year, just a little under 300 permits that we had. You can kind of see the relationship here between the light blue is multifamily and the brown is single-family. And multifamily is always difficult to judge. Some multifamilies give us a lot of children and some multifamilies don't, depending on what it looks like, what people's expectations are about the units. When I look ahead at the projections, what I'm assuming is, at least for the next couple of years, that building activity in the county is going to be very similar, about 300 units. I'd like to believe that over the next few years after that, that we're going to start seeing maybe four, five, 600 units as the housing market completely recovers further to our east and housing prices begin to go up. I think we begin to see a little bit more spillover up here. Pardon?
Single-family housing.
I'm thinking all, all types of, you know, 300 units, all types, because that's what we've seen pretty much the last three years. So.
What do we use for people generation number typically?
It varies. For a single, you're correct. It's for a single-family homes, it's around .43. I think for townhomes, it's around .1115, and about the same for high school. And then we have that for the middle and the highs as well. But those are the general numbers we all kind of think of. Yes, sir.
Yes. No, no, no. That's fine. I love questions. So again, I'm thinking that our kindergarten is going to remain this low based on the birth rate. I am thinking that as we have more housing, the survivorship from, and I hate to call it that for children in particular, the survivorship from birth to kindergarten will go up. Right now, it was at .89. I think that number with some housing growth should be up well over .99293 so that we'll see more children. I think that we at least are expecting— I think that we at least are expecting that we'll see fewer students that leave high school, at least for the time being, based on the recent legislation. Right now, we're showing a growth in pre-K next year. I know that that, I don't project that. That is based, I know, on your decisions, your policy decisions, your budgeting decisions, and so on. Right now, I'm showing what is the best thinking at the time. Just an idea of how I do this, I actually do a base projection as though there were no change. Then I'm given the information from your boundary committee, from Chad, and the boundary committee using GIS. He gives me what the change would look like next year based on the committee's best estimate. I incorporate, I basically do some puts and takes from that projection. And then I need to extrapolate that information out for the next six and 10 years in order to give you your projection. And I'm saying this because, you know, we'll be back here, I think, a year from now, saying, well, how'd we do? And it's always, it's always a little work to settle down. So for your elementary projection, I was projecting basically that next year will look a lot like this year. And that takes into account both the preschool growth and probably a little bit of decline again as a larger fifth grade moves out and a smaller kindergarten moves in, pretty much.
So just to interrupt again, sorry, just trying to help not make it too confusing. The projections include an anticipated 88 additional full-time equivalent pre-K students. So if you look at the number on the screen, the reality is we probably will be down the K through 5 number next year, around 29 students, maybe 29 K through 5 students or less. But if we end up providing all the additional pre-K programs we had talked about, it's possible it could be up to the number that Ms. Newman is projecting. So again, these are projections, but I wanted to be clear between the K through 5 number and then the total FTE number. That way, it's hopefully a little more clear for everyone.
So going back to remind you that my birth numbers for the 2020 and 2021 school year is a projection. So hopefully, we'll start growing again in 2020 in our elementary schools. For middle schools, again, middle schools are probably about the same. I hate to use not 29s and 24s and 23s. I think that that's probably a little bit more precise than I could predict. I would predict that our middle schools are going to be about the same next year as this year. That's kind of the way I feel about it when I see it minus 29 there, that it's going to be about the same. It's easier to do the middles and the highs in the sense that I already know what the grade is that's coming in for the most part. At the high school, it looks like it's going to be a growth here for the high school. For the high school students that we lost this year, we're probably going to add them back in, mostly because the incoming ninth grade is larger than the one that we just In terms of, again, for special ed, generally, I do not forecast special ed schools. I believe that it is a placement issue on your part and it changes throughout the year. So I leave them pretty much the same as what they were. Total student enrollment, I'm thinking actually because of the high schools, you probably will grow next year, but not in the elementary and the middles. Over the course of the next six years, I'm thinking that you could grow by about 415 students. It would be, and think of it as like being on the back of a wave, that the growth in the elementary schools will be down, but then they'll start to pick up at the end of the five-year period. But then that, those low grades are moving into your middles, which will be down, and then the low grades move into your high schools, which will be down. It's all, it's all just cyclical, being driven by that, those small, the small birth numbers coming through.
Report numbers, I can tell there are people who will be watching this later. What's particularly perplexing about this.
Is your mic on? Yeah, okay, you were covering.
What's particularly perplexing for me as a school superintendent is the numbers are so small, spread across 40-some schools, that there's no economy of scale for me. But the other thing is, is that as high school populations grow and middle school populations stay the same, I have no place to rob Peter to pay Paul in order to get teacher units from the middle school to the high school based on some of the certifications that people hold. And so I think what that says to this board is that for the next four to five years, you are going to be challenged by people who say class sizes are up here, but we can't address it without contingency teachers. And even there, you started getting into some funny ground because you don't have enough increase in students, because students are money, that you don't have the money to hire those contingency teachers to address those staffing anomalies. So while I appreciate your report, it's also kind of the best of bad news for us. So continue and depress me.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm looking back at my people in back, and they're like tears, and they've got Kleenex out. But here we go.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and again, I think that if the housing market begins to pick up, I think that's probably more likely to happen and impact us sooner than if the birth, birth numbers start coming back up and sending us larger kindergartens.
Dr. Wilcox, I don't want to add to the bad news, I really don't. But the 143 students that we're projecting to be up, that includes our anticipated pre-K. So if we had no pre-K programs this year, Ms. Newman is projecting we could be up about 55 students. And at the beginning of her presentation, she noted we were very close this year. We were over her projections by 55 students. So we could be zero, we could be 100 over, it's possible we could be 50 under, as far as what we saw in compensatory funding from this year. So I apologize for bringing the bad news, but I think it's an important point to make so everyone's aware of it.
Yeah. I think oftentimes, people don't understand the complexity of school-based staffing and funding models and things. But, you know, this is the heart of that work, and so we thank you for bringing it, because it allows us to be better thinkers and to prepare for the inevitable challenges that we'll face as a school system. I'm happy that some of our bargaining partners are sitting right here listening as well.
Well, I can, you know, the, let's look at what the state is actually saying. I think it's worth looking at the state. Now, again, this table makes it look like the state and I are just not in agreement with each other. And I wanted to point out that the biggest spread there is only 287 students. I have to be within 5 percent of the state's number at the end of this period. They actually are a little bit more optimistic in the early years. Their numbers are higher than mine, I can tell you, in the high schools and middle schools. So I could be wrong there, and their, in the high school numbers and middle school numbers could be higher. I do hope that they will agree with me by the end of the period and be up across the board about 1,000 students. They work with five-year projections. I at least have the opportunity to look a little closer, so. All right, is there any other questions?
Questions for Deanna. I had a couple. I know we're talking, you were talking at the beginning about the different population shifts in the urban area and Northern Virginia and so forth. Have we actually looked inside Washington County itself? And, you know, when we look at where we have capacity in our schools, they tend to be in Clear Spring, Hancock, Boonsborough. Have you actually sort of taken a look at that to see if we're seeing any population shift internally within the county? Because at some point, when all of our seats are in one location, I'm thinking we may be looking at another redistricting. And I'm trying not to do that, and I'm trying to figure out if we need to find seats. Do you see any internal movement of population? You're frowning. Chad, am I asking the question in the wrong way?
No.
So I actually, when I do your projections, I do them grade by grade, school by school. So I build the projection from the bottom up, okay? So I'm always looking at every individual school and what's going on in them. And I can usually, I'll call Chad up and I'll say, so what's going on at Williamsport? Suddenly, their trend looks different. And he says, well, yes, they put in this magnet program there. So I can usually pick up right away when there is something going on trend-wise in an elementary school. Also, sometimes it's spurless and he says, I don't know what's going on. But I'm not seeing any, other than, other than new housing, I mean, new housing causes shifts.
See, I'm looking, we're looking at dual enrollment, middle, college, apprenticeships. We're looking at programs that are going to be taking children from one area of the county possibly to another. So again, even though I appreciate the larger trends, as a board member, I'm trying to figure out how do we predict that? I mean, you're looking at South County, but we know it's going to take 200 houses in South County to generate enough students to put us in a position to justify a school in South County. We're looking at our education facility master plan where we've got to make a decision about a Sharpsburg elementary school. So I guess I'm looking for that pixie dust or that magic wand, but I'm looking for if there's any such thing as guidance as to if we have to delay a new school construction for a year or two years. I mean, it's complex. So I'm trying to see if there's anything to hang on to here.
Right. And I don't know, when I, so for example, when I look at Bester, my first question is what is the kind of housing investor, right? Is there gentrification going on inside the city of Hagerstown that might actually cause those millennials, for example, to want to live in the city of Hagerstown versus living way out, you know, in the country? Is there any, I don't see anything yet that.
A major shift in lifestyle decisions?
Not, it's not showing up in your schools yet, that I can tell. And I'm kind of looking at it statistically, and I don't get the opportunity to drive around as much as I used to.
I wish, from what we record and what we look at as far as in the recorded enrollments that we take in September, and what we look at the changes from schools year to year, if the board members, we've had a couple of schools that have had some very large kindergarten classes come through, and then the next year, they'll have a very small kindergarten class. It's fluctuated a little bit more than normal over the past couple of years. There's been some schools like Lincolnshire where there really has not been any type of new housing development, where we've seen a lot of students come in. And the question becomes, is this a home that was sold by a couple maybe in their 50s or their 60s that are starting to get to the grandchildren, to a younger couple that comes in and maybe has a child, and it becomes like the second generation of that house? We see that taking off. And then this year, we saw Lincolnshire go down just a little bit, not a lot. Still required some redistricting efforts for hopefully to help it more next year. But that's what we're seeing. We're seeing some growth in some areas with no housing. And then we're seeing some areas where we have housing, the Hager's Crossing, some of the, of course, the Rockland Woods area, where we see it go up and down a little bit every year. It hasn't been enough to create a trend for us, to really get a good grasp.
But I'm sensing that we were just having to guess a lot. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Questions? I remind everyone, we are going into the education facility master plan process, and this will be a big part of that discussion, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad.
That takes us to our legislative briefing. Mrs. Cade, welcome. Mr. Trotta.
You're welcome too, Mr. Trotta. Don't touch so much enthusiasm for this.
It's a pleasure to be here. There is a great deal of activity going on in Annapolis. This is known as the week of potential mischief, the last week of the session, when you need to be hearing, listening, asking all the time because things happen that you didn't expect. If you saw me running out in the hall, it was because John Woolham's of MAB was in touch with us to let me know, to let us know that the fuel tax bill, which has gotten a little complicated because of the way the bill wrote, bill drafters wrote it, it included all of your vehicles, not just your school buses. And the intention was for it to cover just school buses. And so the House staff had brought this up to us and had developed an amendment which has, in the last hour, been adopted. And that bill now will go back over to the Senate to be conformed with, so that the House and the Senate will have both voted on it. So it will first now go from the House Committee to the House floor, either later today or tomorrow, and then back over to the Senate. And of course, we have lots and lots of days left, so that bill should be passed. And I have to tell you that the other counties are very grateful to the fact that your attorney, Mr. Trotta and others here, when they got that bill from the comptroller's office, looked into it and have made about over $5 million, will have made about $5 million available to school systems that would otherwise have gone to the Transportation Trust Fund.
Can we remind them of this when another bill comes up next year?
We'll remind them every time we get a chance.
The larger counties possibly? Just a thought.
Yes. Because we do see bills that favor some counties over others. For instance, the bill for, just in relation to that, the bill for declining enrollment, you didn't decline enough. But two more, there were three jurisdictions that were to get declining enrollment money. They've added two more, one of which happens to be Baltimore City, which happened to have quite a decrease in enrollment. And so there's $13 million in the budget, which will go to five different jurisdictions, most of it to Baltimore City. Since I've started on the fuel tax, I'll just go ahead with the bills that, because there's a lot going on all the time now. The bills that you had us introduce, or that you introduced and that we've been bird dogging, the fuel tax I've just told you about, the, it's been interesting to see what they did with the air ambulance. And again, you knew that the bill wouldn't really solve the problem, that it's really a federal issue, but the insurance commissioner really has been doing a lot of work on this. And I don't know if you've consulted with your own hospital here, but ostensibly, they have changed their protocols and are using a service now which is a lot cheaper than the service that had been provided before. That does not make it inexpensive, it makes it less expensive. And he gave a good report on the work that they had done trying to negotiate between the insurance companies and the air ambulance companies. And out of that, apparently, your hospital changed its protocols and is now contacting the receiving hospital who make the arrangements, and that somehow is a better arrangement and less expensive. And also, they apparently are using a different air ambulance to the extent they can. And then that very week, on ABC News, national news, there was a report on this very thing and the very company that has been serving your community. So it's not just something that you have brought to people's attention, it is getting national attention. And it will still take congressional action apparently before it can really be resolved. But it is something that I didn't know about until you all told me about. And it is, things are happening that are going to improve that situation. I've told you about the gas tax. The bill which would allow non-public students to attend public schools has been heard by the Education Committee, and they have shown considerable interest in it. And they have not voted on it. I don't know if they finally will vote on it or not vote on it, but it has gotten questions. And the chairman has shown attention to it, the vice chairman has shown attention to it. I've talked with many of the subcommittee members, some of who are very, who are very supportive of that approach. And there has been discussion of whether it should be, as you introduced, as you requested it, with the parents paying, or whether it should be, as the bill was introduced parents paying, or whether it should be, as the bill was introduced by the delegation which had it under maintenance of effort with the state and the county paying for it. So I can't tell you anymore at this point. It's sitting in that subcommittee, and whether they will act on it, we still don't know. A bill that we tried to latch on to, the adjunct instructor bill, would allow hiring some experts for up to half-time to teach specialized courses. And it's similar to what you were seeking last year, and out of which we only got a study which didn't really lead us very far ahead. This bill was introduced by Anaronda County delegation, but just on the House side, not on the Senate side for some reason. And we asked to be amended in it, and our delegation supported that, and the Anaronda County people were fine with that. But for some reason, and it's a politics thing, it's not, I think it's a politics thing more than an intellectual thing. The House Education Subcommittee has not moved that bill and do not appear to intend to move that bill. And I think this is a response to the union who do object to that bill. So we don't expect now that that bill is going to move, but like I say, this is the week of surprises, and it could be that suddenly that bill will be out of committee and into the House. So those are the bills. And then, of course, the bill that Jeff Gladhill testified on so effectively, which would have given parents a virtual veto over changes in their child's IEP, that bill has been turned into a study. Something similar to that has been in every year, and it's always a very emotional hearing, it's always very contentious. And the chairman of EHEA this year sort of in shouting out in distress and despair said, "There seems to be something really a problem here, and I want you all to solve it." And so they have, instead of passing the bill, they will be doing a study to try and find ways that the parents can be feeling that they are getting better input, but it won't immediately throw the burden of proof onto the Boards of Education, which would create a rather major cost in most school systems. So those are the bills that I think are of special interest to you. And then I also had sent you the MAB Green Street and said that I would bring you up to date on some of those bills. The Commission on Education Funding, you can call it Thornton II, you can call it whatever you want, it's through both Houses, there's some slight differences, so that it's going to have to be a conference committee, and they'll figure out. The amendments are not bad, the amendments just plug in things about your master plan and putting it off and so forth. So that one looks like it will get established, because that's very, very important, that that work of that commission be started as soon as possible. There won't be any funding for pre-K, but there was a lot of work done that establishes what pre-K really is going to cost the states and the state and the locals if we, when it is instituted. And the cost is suggested for the state at $85 million and the locals for $43 million. So it's a major expenditure that, in response to a program that I think most people feel is very important and almost essential to be established over the next few years. I've talked about boost and boast, and this year, the legislature, the House finally felt okay about some kind of a voucher program. And I'm not sure why their mind changed, because they've generally been opposed to it. But instead of a kind of a tax credit program wherein a business could give money to a nonprofit that would then give money to a school, mostly to non-public schools or to non-public students, they established it as a program through budget language. There's no bill, the bill is all the language in the budget. So there is now going to be a $5 million voucher program run by the Maryland Department of Education. And it will be for students who go to schools that are in the textbook program, schools that have tuition that is less than the state average, and they, it will be for kids who qualify for free and reduced-price lunches. So State Board has a whole new matter that they're going to have to administer. And this will be interesting to see whether this is the tip of the iceberg, and we're going more and more toward support, state support of non-public schools, or if this is something that will get tried and maybe not grow from $5 million on. But that is a big philosophical change at the state level. The diabetes management bill was very contentious last year and this year because it established volunteerism in training to administer some very, some medicines to diabetic kids who, that can be really damaging if not done correctly. So Ann Kaiser, the chairman of the Education Subcommittee, took everybody in a room, invited everybody who was a stakeholder in this, that included the Diabetes Association, the school nurses, the State Board, and State Health Department, and MAB, of course, was there, and PASM, and all the other stakeholders, and sort of walked them into a room, closed the door, and said, "Okay, figure it out, you know, come back when you've got a solution." And they did. And John Woolums was apparently very instrumental in working with that group. And the conclusion is a bill that will channel all of this through the school nurse, and who already has certain authority to designate other people to administer medicines and so forth. So that it's not that you will be, or that each principal will be trying to get a fifth grade science teacher to come and give insulin shots and glucosan shots, but that this will be handled through that nursing, the nurse who has that legal authority. And there will be protection, liability protection. It is required, I think anyhow, that on field trips and so forth, that a disabled child or a child with special needs, such as a diabetic child, that they can be accommodated on things like field trips, so that there does have to be somebody who can administer to them if needed. So that seems to have reached a solution. I think everybody's happy with it. And that doesn't always happen. Sometimes everybody's equally unhappy with the solution. I think this one, maybe people really are satisfied that it's a good solution. There were six bills, at least, on student assessment, and they have taken all different kinds of approaches. One bill which requires that you post on your website what tests you are giving and why, what they're for. That bill has passed. But the bills we're really trying to keep from passing are particularly the one that limits testing to 2% of a student's time. And again, this may be more than adequate for most students, but when you get into AP tests and all that sort of thing, for some students this would be disastrous. So those have gone through the House, and we're hoping that the Senate will kill them, and think they probably will. The PTEC, which you have shown some interest in, there's no bill. The bill hasn't moved, but they put it in the budget instead, in budget language. And instead of just having four schools, two in Baltimore, one in Western Maryland, and one on the shore, they added two in Prince George's County. The other counties were very out of sorts that they had not been included. So some of them probably still are out of sorts about it. But that was in the budget, the budget has passed, that money is there, and that program is established.
Artis May, just to interrupt.
Yes.
I am aware that Frederick has applied, we will apply shortly for the PTEC grant, and I believe Garrett has already applied, is that correct?
Yeah.
So the PTEC grant for Western Maryland is likely to be a competition. Interestingly, some people had some advanced knowledge in terms of the building of their grants, so we'll see how it goes. But we are an applicant, or will be shortly.
And what is the amount? Do you know as far as how it's going to be divided up?
No, it's not huge.
No.
The, there's a bill in that would remove local school system control over school-sponsored publications, and only the advisor to the publication would have any control. It's a very unusual bill, I think, and effort is underway to kill it because it just opens up things that are not necessarily very appropriate. There's a couple of bills that are known as the Baltimore Package. There, all kinds of things are happening for Baltimore in this session in response to their problems last year. But this is known as, and there are two bills, and one of them would not apply to your county, the next-generation scholars, which would make some grants through nonprofits to students in jurisdictions that have more than 50% free and reduced-price meals. And you're at 40-something, is that right?
We're 49, 50.
Well, I think there are eight jurisdictions that are covered, and it would be an incentive program for young people, 7th, 9th graders, to commit themselves to certain goals, including they'd have to satisfy the attendance policy, refrain from substance abuse, and they promised that they would apply for higher education during their senior year and various other things, and for which they would get some support by these nonprofits, and then would also get a certain limited amount of money grant. But since you don't qualify, I'm sorry. And that's gone through one House and is appearing to go through the other as well. And the other program, which I think may apply here, is the one that would provide some funding for expanding your summer and after-school programs through the parks and recreation, and the schools and the libraries, and higher ed programs and so forth. And again, it's to keep kids, it's called Public School Opportunities Enhancement Act, and it's to allow for more opportunities for kids outside of the immediate school hours. And there's some funding in, for that program. The other one that I, is sort of a strange bill, but it seems to have been moving, is the Maryland Education Development Collaborative. And it's, the State Board would, a group that would be established, it's business people and other people, and they would have some funding, and they would recommend to the State Board policies needed to promote 21st century learning that enhances socioeconomic and demographic diversity. This could be very interesting. It could be something that would maybe help some of your very creative ideas get heard and get brought to the forefront. So that bill, I think, is going to pass, but I'm not sure about that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, you checked on the bill that, or Jamie immediately checked on the bill that you asked about, about the breakfast before...
Grab and go mandate.
Breakfast before the bill, before the bell, is what that bill was called, and that meant you had to have it before first period.
It was just very awkward.
Right. It was heard on the House side on March 31st, but there's no report, and it has not made, the Senate bill has not been, has not moved at all. And that's Senate Bill 756.
Okay. Thank you.
So it is active in Annapolis. You can call me if you have any questions along through the week, I'll try and answer them. Like I say, at this time of year, you really have to be listening and watching and moving around and talking to your friends and your contacts to kind of keep up with what's going on, because committees, subcommittees meet all of a sudden and vote on a bill. The House may be in for five hours, and then they're going to have a subcommittee meeting immediately after that. You don't have any idea what time that's going to be, because you don't know when they're going to get out. And they may take up the bill you've been waiting weeks to have heard. So it's an exciting week. Overall, education, I think, has done fairly well this session. The budget was very, much easier than many years. The budget is through, the budget is peaceful, except for the money that the Legislative Conference Committee fenced off. And what that means is that the governor cannot spend it for anything else, but I think it's like $79,000 altogether. And it's like all kinds of different things, that he must release all of it or none of it. So to the extent that it has programs in it that he especially likes, that's, helps him release it. On the other hand, they put into it things that were already in the budget, that already had been approved, that he had put in the budget. But for you, the biggest piece of that is that there's $19 million in there, of which $479,000 would be yours for the funding of the increase in pensions. And so you don't know now, and you may not know for a long time, whether that $479,000 will come to you or not. So if you're talking to the governor, ask him to release the money that was fenced in. The other education money in that pot is $6 million for the aging school program, and I'm not sure if you get much of that or not. But then there are, as I say, there are other programs that are totally unrelated to education that are also in that pot, some of which are ones that the governor very much wants. However, it sounds easy, he can just release it. But they did this to him last year on the GCEI money, and he hadn't included that. So that was money they said, "We're finding money for this." He never did release it. And he's made clear that he doesn't want, he doesn't like the idea of money being fenced in. So this is the kind of tension that's going on, and that is the biggest fiscal difference for you. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any predictions on the vetoes?
I think they'll probably override any of his vetoes. I mean, I think that was their strategy. They've passed some bills that they want to have go into effect in July, that they thought the governor would veto, which he has. One particular one has to do with giving him, giving them some notice about, some input into how Rhodes money is spent.
Rank.
He has to explain if he doesn't, if he doesn't use it as it's been ranked. And of course, that limits the governor's power and increases the legislator's power, so they like the bill, he doesn't like the bill. He vetoed it, and they will probably override that. And then, and any other bills that he vetoes, that they have on his desk by, had on his desk. desk by yesterday, they can, if he vetoes them, he has a week to decide. And so, if by next, by Friday, by Saturday, by Sunday, Monday morning that he's vetoed them, they could still override. And that's the kind of thing that happens in the last, often in the last hour of the legislature.
Any questions for Artith?
Just one briefly. The, thank you for the report. The House companion bill to Senate Bill 898, that's the tuition bill, that's stuck in the Rules Committee. What's the reason for that?
I don't believe that ever came out of the Rules Committee.
Why did it end up in the Rules Committee?
Because it was introduced after the date that original bills were supposed to be introduced.
Thank you. That seems like somewhat, I mean, one of the reasons to file it on both sides is that if one gets stuck somewhere in a committee because a chair doesn't want to move it forward or something, you've got the other bill that can move forward.
That you try and, yeah, try and bring it across.
And you can flip it to the other side, but I guess we don't have that opportunity because it wasn't filed in time? Is that sort of where we are?
Not on that bill.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's getting to the point that I think they may not vote on it. I mean, it's been a week, and lots of conversations, and, but like I say, it's a time of surprises.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions, thank you again, Mrs. Cade.
My pleasure.
And appreciate all your extra effort in Annapolis, and your extra pair of eyes and ears, and keeping us updated.
Well, I get excited to hear about the good news about the School for the Arts being the 15th-best school in the state, and the activity of the Department of Housing, and I'm happy to help with that in any way I can because that's my old haunts. And so, and they do have some relatively good funding in their department for interesting rehab projects.
The last time you were here, I think we were discussing the budget, so.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. All right. That brings us to Board Member Committee reports. I think I'll start to my right. Mr. Ridenhour, anything with curriculum and instruction?
We have not met since our last meeting. We will be meeting the 26th of April at 10:45.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher, Policy Development?
We met on March 22nd, and obviously, we reviewed and edited, rewrote in some cases DIF and KD, which we heard earlier today. The other piece of business that we dealt with was fundraising in school-sponsored activities. We reviewed some similar policies from other LEAs, and we agreed that booster organizations as well as other outside support groups need to be addressed in this policy. Legal Counsel's Office is reformatting the policy and adding information for the outside groups. Also, several board staff members are being consulted for input, along with elementary and secondary supervisors. Our next meeting is April the 12th. Stakeholders who are interested in reviewing the two policies that we approved on first read today can read them through the Board Docs link at the top of the WCPS webpage, and comments will be accepted for the next two weeks.
Thank you. Mr. Guesford, Facilities?
Yes, thank you. We had our meeting, and one of the most important things that we've discussed, exciting, is the Jonathan Hager Elementary School. We are at about 99% complete at that time. Final blacktopping would be completed soon. Air quality testing had been completed, and we're just waiting on the lab results. Site work, which include grass, area shrubs, and stormwater management pond is continuing. We'll be starting to do the floor waxing coming up, and furniture will be arriving May 1st. Our next meeting is, we're going to do a walkthrough to take a look at that site, and we'll be meeting there at the school at 7:30 on the 26th, if I can remember correctly. We also reviewed some of the different schools over the summer that will be, that we're doing some design services, just to name a few. Boons Bar with replacement of the HVAC. Antietam Academy security doors, including Boons Bar Elementary, Clear Spring, Northern Middle, Pleasant Valley, all having security entrances, work done. And along with Boons Bar Middle and Clear Spring, we're doing some barn repair. So, a lot of things happening in the facilities.
Very good. Thank you. Dr. Harding's, any additional legislative response, comments?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Mrs. Williams, Finance Report?
Yes, the Board Finance Committee has not met since our last meeting. We will meet on Tuesday, April 26th, at noon in the conference room on the third floor.
Mrs. Hirschman, Human Resources?
HR will hold its next meeting on April 27th, that's a Wednesday, at 9:00 a.m. The agenda will be posted, and the room, I believe, is Washington Room upstairs. Everyone's invited.
Very good. Ms. Greenwall, Government?
Washington County Association of Student Councils met on March 31st at South High. We received a report from the Health Department on the heroin crisis in our county, and we also accepted nominations for the offices of student member of the Board, President, Vice President, Treasurer, Secretary, and Second Vice President. Our student member of the Board elections will now be April 28th, which is our next meeting. This meeting will be held at Springfield Middle School. We are actually, as our association, is sending a delegation to our state leadership conference tomorrow through Friday. One of our delegates, who is actually the current state vice president, will be running for president, and we have a delegation of about 20 students who are attending.
Thank you. Okay. Any other reports? Mabe reports, Conference Committee, anything?
Conference Committee will meet on Tuesday, April 22nd, at Mabe Headquarters in Annapolis.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, April 22nd is a Friday, is it? Okay, I thought you said Tuesday. I'm sorry. I misheard.
You did say Tuesday.
Did I say Tuesday?
But it is Friday.
We didn't know if it was Tuesday or Friday.
It's Friday.
Didn't know if it was Tuesday, the 19th, or Friday, the 20th.
It is Friday. Thank you, Dr. Harding.
You bet.
Okay. Any additional reports?
Not a report, but Wednesday, April 20th, is the Teacher of the Year event at Fountainhead Country Club. Board members, if you'd like to attend, please let my office know.
We, I think, have coordinated with Deb. And you can get that to Cheryl and coordinate that. Thank you. All right. If there are no further reports, that takes us to miscellaneous business, future agenda items. The Agenda Committee met today, as we do each meeting before, 15 minutes before our closed-session meeting. We discussed a possible date for the Budget Work Session. We also are going to be bringing forward the Education Facility Master Plan, which we talked about earlier this evening, as far as the report on enrollment numbers. So, that'll be an important conversation. We will have a work session on that one. Also, on the back, the Item Proposals will be doing a Career and Technology Program presentation, and also a Leadership Development Goal. That's all we have at this point. And for the public to know, board members every Friday afternoon receive a fairly detailed listing of the Agenda Calendar. It usually goes forward, the one I'm looking at goes all the way to June 7th. They're not completed at that time. They're only in a draft form, and it really depends on policies that come out of Policy Committee for Reads. So, they're changing. They're very fluid, but it gives everyone a chance to sort of look at their personal and business calendars. So, that leaves us with Board Member Comments. I've forgotten which end I started last time. Mr. Ridenhour?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing.
Mr. Guesford?
I'd just like to say that I attended the Winter Street School farewell. Ms. Stevens and her, the staff that was up there, forgive me, I can't remember the principal's name.
All's House?
All's House. They all did a fantastic job. I think Ms. Stevens put a lot of heart and soul into that program up there. So, it was very nice to attend that and see the community out in support of saying farewell to their fine school there on Winter Street.
Dr. Harding's?
Yes, I unfortunately will not be able to attend the Teacher of the Year banquet, I think. I've attended everyone since I've been on the Board. There was one when I was in the hospital with an appendectomy, so maybe they can forgive me for that one. This one, I'll be out of town on business, unfortunately. That's one of my favorite events of the year because it celebrates what many of our kids experience every day, which is great people and great teaching, and the mentors who enable the students that we saw today to soar high in literal and figurative ways. So, I'm sorry I will miss that. I also attended the Winter Street event, which was really fantastic. It reminded me of one of the things I said when Best opened, which is, what makes a school is not the library, or the gymnasium, or the cafeteria, or the classrooms. What makes a school a school is what goes on inside it. And that's the principals, the teachers, the students, the cafeteria workers, who build within the building a community that we recognize as a place of learning. And that's really what makes it a school. And it's very clear that in that community, that that sort of spirit will, I think, far survive the actual building. And that was just a great thing to see. So, thanks to them for creating such a wonderful event.
Very good. Thank you. Any further comments? Dr. Walker, Mrs. Williams?
Yes. Recently, we received a letter from Regina Jacobs, who's chairing the Mabe Nominating Committee. And her letter was seeking nominations for Mabe's Board of Directors. And last year, our nomination went in a little late. The deadline this year is May 16th. And at this time, I'm expressing my interest in serving on the Board, and I would ask that my colleagues give some consideration to that nomination. I believe that my service on Mabe's committees, I've served three years on the Resolution Committee. I've served, this is my fourth year, on the Conference Planning Committee. I've completed the requirements for Mabe's Leadership 1 and 2. I hope to receive my certificate for the Leadership 2 program this fall. I believe I've demonstrated my commitment to serving Mabe and to representing this Board at Mabe. I've also attended conferences every year, the Mabe Conferences, and one NSBA conference my first year I was able to attend. So, I would ask that my colleagues give some consideration to putting my name forward as a nominee to the Board of Directors of Mabe.
And I have that same letter here, and we'll be sure to put that on the agenda for consideration.
Thank you. And then I have one other thing.
Absolutely.
I, too, was able to attend the farewell to Winter Street. And Winter Street holds a very special place in my heart. I did my student teaching there, and I ended my teaching career there before coming here to the Central Office to work as an administrator. So, I spent a little bit of quiet time, as quiet as it could be with the hundreds of people that seemed to be moving through the halls of Winter Street on Sunday. Spent a little time in that classroom where I did my student teaching. So, it was a wonderful experience on Sunday, and many thanks to Pam Stevens and to her team that put together such a nice farewell event.
Thank you. Mrs. Hirschman?
No comment today.
Ms. Greenwall, any additional comments?
I will close out the meeting. I think several of us were very touched by the farewell at Winter Street. There were a lot of tears and a lot of handshakes. And Matt Simler was recognized as one of the principals. In fact, I think that was the first time I met Matt at a facility meeting committee that we were going out to schools to visit schools. And that's when I sort of had my first experience at Winter Street, and fell in love with the folks there and the community, and just the feeling of the wraparound, the hugs, the kisses, very touching. I know that we have surplus, the Board has surplus that facility back to the county, and I only am speaking for myself, but I hope there's a way somehow that building can be kept as a community asset. I think it's the heart of that West End, and I would like to, hopefully, the county can find some way to continue to have that building serve the families in that community. So, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Seeing no further comments, we are adjourned.